Turn it over to you, Chair.
All right. Thank you. I'd like to call to order the January nineteenth meeting of the Community Services Committee. This is a special meeting this this time because of the change of date. Next month it'll be a regular meeting as posted on the city calendar. City calendar. Call the meeting to order at seven oh one P M. And we have with us tonight members of the committee, Councilperson Barbara Smith, Councilperson Nicole Ayers, Councilperson Edwin Camacho, a Councilperson Brian Meek, Councilperson Heidi Alterman and Councilperson Diana Revolus, who has just logged in, and myself, David Hubelmann, Chair. So, uh, let's move to public comments. We have, I believe, one person in the wings, Diane Lauricella, who is, has her hand raised? Can we promote her to be able to speak?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Okay.
Go ahead, Diane.
Can you hear up?
It's a broken up. Can you hear me?
Yes, we hear you fine.
Okay, first of all, I wish all of you a happy and healthy new year with all of our challenges and congratulations. Councilman Hubelmann as as our new chair. Appreciate appreciate you for serving all of you. Anyway, this evening, for the record, my name is Diane Lauricella, twenty one Little Fox Lane in West Norwalk. Um, first of all, I wanted, in reviewing today's agenda, I wanted to express that I have, I think it's been a great idea that the Health Director and all those on her team have utilized the services of students that are trained. Fair, tonight, I guess you're going to be voting on Fairfield University and then nursing agreements. And I think that's a terrific, not only opportunity for the the students, but also for our city. So I congratulate you all for finding those. Um, for those of you that are new to this committee and especially as the new chair, over the last, since the pandemic hit, I have attempted to share my ideas about messaging in in order to reduce the spread of COVID. And it can also be utilized for the flu and the RSV viruses that happened. Um, there has been some mixed success, but I still feel that there are still opportunities that we are missing for the general public. I am disappointed that right before the, at the last meeting in November, right before the holidays, that there was not a, in my opinion, a robust and creative method, including utilizing all of you council people as trusted trusted messengers to help the public understand the different ways that they can possibly reduce the chance of spreading COVID when they are meeting with their loved ones. Um, even though there are things on the city website, in truth, the public either doesn't know about it or they're they're not using it. And it is not, and I'm on the record for suggesting creative ways, including posters with pictures at Stop and Shop, Shop Right, the library, City Hall. Unfortunately, in this last, I know as the Omicron variant changes, some of the modalities should change as well. I've had discussions with some of the staff. Tonight, you will hear again how much the staff is doing about COVID. I ask, Ms. Chairman Hubelmann, I would like to meet with you because I still think we can do more. And it won't cost us money, that much money, a lot of it is for free because other towns are doing and finding ways to have photographs for of how to wear your mask, what type of masks. And I would love, I'm going to wrap up now. I would love to see us consider some of the ARPA money to be used for free, better masks, not um, not the, I have an OSHA background. I've trained people and helped find fitting, fit testing for all kinds of masking, respirators, et cetera. I think we can do better as a city in offering for free better masks. KN ninety five and N ninety five, and we could, of course, state for the record as we give them out, that this is not going to guarantee any kind of absolute, because nothing is absolute with this virus or any virus, but especially COVID. We can use whatever words that our legal team needs. But we need to try to help our citizens understand in layman's terms how they can utilize beyond, there's been too much emphasis on just the vaccinations. There are other tools in the toolbox that have not, in my professional opinion, as an environmental health professional in helping people understand all the different ways that this particular variant still can be spread around. It's the gift that keeps on giving, right? So let's do better in two thousand and twenty three. Let's work together. I feel at times like there's a almost kill the messenger mentality when I have spoken to the both the Board of Health and the Health Department and this committee in the past at times. I think we could use a little grace and make sure people realize the public will come out and help if you only ask them to do so. I had suggested a COVID ambassador when COVID first broke out, and that would be to help our our staff to spread the good word in a, in a very fun, creative and friendly way. I know the staff is doing a lot, but I'm not sure there, I do not feel they're doing enough. Because when I went to Vets Park to get my, I went to Vets Park and I really very much appreciate this city's ability to put together different free vaccination sites and testing sites, that sort of thing. But these are opportunities for us to post, have posters put together. We have the money that we got from ARPA. Let's use it for education outreach in a creative way. And I do not see-
Diane, we're we're a little over three minutes now. Can we?
Well, I'll wrap up. I do get around. I attended the MLK, wonderful MLK event at City Hall. I've attended numerous events at Art Space. I go to the library, I go to Stop Right, Shop Right and Stop and Shop. And I am still, it's just because we, it was a considered a high level. And now I've just been told that we're dropping back to medium. Well, think of this. I did not hear much from this city or any of you or the mayor about what people should do while we were in the high level. Let's be preventive. Let's work together to make this a much more user-friendly. Let's try to stop the spread. Let's flatten the curve or whatever other jargon that was used. We can do it. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much, Diane. Is there anyone else signed up to speak? I don't see any other attendees. And is there anything that any of the members of the committee have received that needs to be read into the record? No? All right, then we will close public comment. And move on to the next order of business. Approval of the minutes from the meeting held on November sixteenth, two thousand and twenty two. Can I have a motion?
Motion.
Thank you. Councilperson Diana Revolus moves. Do we have any changes, additions, deletions? Anyone? All right, I've got a couple that I want to put in here. Hold on, page. If we can look on page one of those minutes, can we, the, under where it says board, can we change, make sure that the spelling of Councilperson Meek's name is spelled correctly, Brian, B R Y A N? I think that's the only spot that I saw it, but if we can check through the document again and make sure. On page two, in the second paragraph, the, it starts, the Health Department is currently working. If we can, after hosting students, if we can cut the S off of students and cut the at department and insert student interns and practicums at the Health Department. Then at the bottom of that page, under letter B, updates from the Human Services Department in the first paragraph, the last word families should be dropped and replaced with referrals. In the next paragraph, where it starts, the department has hired at the last line of that, he is working at the library addressing concerns about ADA compliance. So we would lose handles to begin. And that's all the changes that I have from those minutes. Does anyone else have anything to add? If not, we have a motion. We vote, show of hands to accept the minutes as amended from the November sixteenth, two thousand and twenty two. All of you, use your hand, sorry, or say I. I have one, two, three. Diana, did you say I? Okay, we have-
I did say I, I'm sorry, the baby.
Any, any opposed? Abstentions? We have three abstentions, myself, David Hubelmann, Ed Camacho, and Nicole Ayers. So everyone else voted in the affirmative and three abstentions. Great. Thank you very much. Moving on to the next order of business discussion, we have updates from the Health Department, and I'll turn it over to Deanna DiAmore.
Thank you, Chairman Hubelmann. So Brian Weeks is gonna start by giving us his updates on where we are with COVID and other respiratory diseases. So for those who don't know, Brian, he is our Program Director, Director of Epidemiology and Informatics.
All right, good evening, everybody. Hi, everybody. Let's jump right into it then, but happy two thousand and twenty three and looking forward to a prosperous and productive year in terms of addressing whatever else might come out. Because keep in mind, in hindsight, looking at two thousand and twenty two, not only were we dealing with the Omicron subvariant, you know, manifesting, or Omicron variant manifesting multiple subvariants. We also were dealing with monkeypox and also some other diseases that we were monitoring in terms of activity that popped up relative to international outbreaks in areas that may be endemic. So it was actually a very interesting time. It was truly a gift that kept on giving too, along with obviously COVID and other respiratory illnesses. So something to kind of keep in mind that, you know, there's a broad spectrum in terms of things that we're dealing with. So with that said, switching gears more towards just monitoring the respiratory illness season as we're in the midst of the peak of this activity. This is the city COVID nineteen data hub. So again, that's norwalkct.org forward slash COVID data. And this is accessible to anybody and available twenty four seven. What is showing up firstly, as we're familiar with, is the CDC COVID nineteen community level. So this was a metric and system developed by the CDC to monitor COVID activity, but switching gears, so to speak, relative to the pandemic and looking at more severity of illness and impact on the healthcare system. So as a reminder, there's the low, medium, and high tiers. It's a three-tiered system. And low, obviously, is when lower, you're experiencing lower activity. Medium is obviously medium activity. High is a higher activity relative to the certain threshold. So the threshold this system looks at is the case rate relative to each county in the United States. And then from there, it determines based upon kind of hierarchical system the staffed inpatient beds that are COVID positive patients. So the percentage of that utilization and then also new admissions for COVID nineteen. And again, all these metrics are looking at for the most recent seven days in terms of data. From there, that determines where a county is sitting in terms of these metrics and therefore guidance that's tied to it. So right now, as an update, this is a very timely meeting, having these on Thursdays now in the evening, because the CDC actually updates this once a week every Thursday. So it's just in time, actually. They just updated their website. So you can see that component here. So looking at kind of just the general measures tied to these metrics, you know, right now, Fairfield County is at medium. We just moved from high to medium, and we've been vacillating back and forth just because of the current situation with the respiratory illness season. But tied to this is, you know, anybody that's a high risk of getting sick should be wearing a mask or a respirator of some sort, such as the N ninety fives. When indoors and public, obviously, you know, when it comes to the general population, it's not necessarily recommended per se by the CDC, but it's not a bad measure, and especially in the midst of the current season. You know, and especially everything else that is circulating, because keep in mind, these metrics are looking at just COVID nineteen, more or less. It's not a bad measure to mitigate that activity, especially this is the higher time in the high risk. And so technically, when we were in the high indoor public settings, it is recommended for everybody to be wearing masks. With that said, again, keep in mind, if somebody's ill, you know, you you want to obviously social distance accordingly, mitigate the risk, especially if they're a higher risk of illness too, in terms of having pre-existing conditions that could complicate course of illness. And then obviously testing. So when somebody is anticipating that they may be ill and testing while they're waiting for that result, not going out in the community, exposing others, exposing household members unnecessarily, and obviously going to work or things or school, things of that nature. So just be mindful of that, you know, it's really a mindfulness that it's also tied to this process to really mitigate those chains of transmission relative to this guidance and recommendations from the CDC. Also, obviously, as we're well familiar with, staying up to date with the the COVID nineteen vaccine is really going to be an important part of mitigating the severity of illness and partially also impacting the risk of a further infection to others and risk of infection. You know, obviously, maintaining ventilation is going to be an incredibly important part of that, too. Obviously, sitting in a small confined setting with somebody that may be infected with COVID nineteen, where the air is obviously stagnant or sitting, it can increase one's risk compared to say having something outdoors. Now, obviously, we're in the winter time, although it's a very mild winter in comparison. You know, finding opportunities to at least increase ventilation using, you know, certain systems or having windows open if possible. Or obviously modifying, you know, schedules or events to accommodate not having as many individuals is also a good measure to help mitigate. Naturally, with COVID, you know, the phrase you may have heard is layered mitigation measures. So it's not just one thing that's going to mitigate. But obviously, collectively, they they provide better protection or prevention in terms of exposure. So that's again, the vaccines, you know, masking, ventilation, being mindful of the events and in other activities you may be engaging in, the risk, person's personal risk in terms of just pre-existing conditions and other things like that. And obviously, following the isolation and guidance that the CDC provides, so just be mindful of that as well. So I just wanted to kind of overview that really quickly, just so, you know, we can kind of be mindful of that. And that's also kind of listed here from the CDC, just as, this is the reminder too. So there's other links for local resources for the city here. So that's the COVID nineteen testing, COVID nineteen vaccination, and also the Info Center, which includes additional guidance relative to other circumstances. This also includes the at-home testing portal. So obviously, a lot of individuals are doing at-home tests, which are not affordable to the State Health Department and in turn the local health department. So we are not aware of them, but it's obviously creating a large data gap that we're aware of. Because a lot of people are doing this, and it's very convenient, which is great. But at the same time, if anybody wants additional guidance or, you know, just wants to kind of communicate with somebody that can help walk them through this process in terms of what they should be doing in terms of isolation or notifying other individuals, happy to do so. So that's accessible at this webpage as well. So moving forward, you know, usually I I kind of mentioned this, you know, in terms of the US cumulative COVID nineteen cases, we're at, you know, almost one hundred and two million relative to the entirety of the pandemic. Then globally speaking, you're almost at six hundred and seventy million, which is just, you know, this really kind of interesting and amazing to see, you know, relative to the the almost three years now that we've had of the pandemic and been coping with it. It throughout its evolution. So usually, I talk about the case rate and the percent positivity. So I'll glance through this really quickly. But again, because of the data gap from at-home testing, there is, you know, there is a knowledge and interpretation gap here with it. Nonetheless, as a comparison, you can see how Norwalk stacks up against the other big six Connecticut cities by population, and you can see the highest right now is New Haven, the city of New Haven for case rate for the last seven days. But in terms of percent positivity, the highest is actually Norwalk at the moment. And so just keep in mind, you know, with these metrics, you know, the gray area, as I mentioned, but also it's important that, you know, people get tested. When you have a higher percent positivity, the indication here is that more people should be seeking out testing. But the catch here, again, a lot of people may be opting for at-home testing, which is not going to be factored in here. So just keeping that in mind. But now, in terms of the stronger metrics that really give us a much better idea of what our situation is and the gravity of it, this is the COVID associated hospitalizations for the state of Connecticut, and you can see this for the entirety of the pandemic. So some perspective here. As you can see, the beginning of the pandemic, we were at one thousand nine hundred forty nine COVID associated hospitalizations, patient census at one point, and that was again in April. You know, in two thousand and twenty one, the beginning of the year, relative to the same time where we are right now, you know, almost like one thousand two hundred sixty nine. And then for the year two thousand and twenty two, when, you know, we were dealing with the, really the peak of Omicron variant really entering the United States and really rendering its havoc, so to speak, one thousand nine hundred thirty nine. So now let's look at where we are right now. So we had a peak in the beginning of January, around January, you know, fifth and seventh, you know, around seven hundred and seventy nine was the highest COVID associated hospitalizations that we had. So right now, we're only at six hundred. So it's actually been decreasing over the last two weeks, which is a really great sign, which may indicate and does suggest that we may have peaked already in terms of COVID activity. Still a little early, because you could always have a resurgence, right? You're not limited to one peak. You could have multiple peaks, and, you know, the second one doesn't necessarily have to be as low as the other one. So we have to keep that in mind. But still, maybe to any perspective, you could see here that we're lower than any of the other years relative to this time in January, which is really great news. And I think it's suggestive quite a few things here. As I mentioned, we have a mild winter, and so with less colder weather, you know, there's more opportunities for social distancing. You know, other things that kind of factor in there in terms of transmission of viruses, especially in the case of flu, there's a lot of scientific literature that indicates that with the lower temperature, lower humidity, the virus is better able to transmit. So it somewhat plays into this circumstance. But the other thing I think is also important to keep in mind, we have a lot of people in terms of being up to date with their vaccines. That has helped mitigate illness. And it also, keep in mind, that we've been dealing with various subvariants of the Omicron variant since two thousand and twenty two. That's really what's been running the show. So we had BA four, BA five, you know, we got XBB one point five that you've been hearing about in the news as of late. But all again, related, although mutations are related to the Omicron variant. And so you could see how that, because of the large volume of individuals, when you actually collectively look at this, there's been immunity rendered, natural immunity, along with obviously individuals staying up to the to the vaccine with the vaccine. So with that said, that had really helped kind of protect the population in terms of the severity of illness outcomes as evident here. So those are the kind of the major variables that are played into this. But I think it's again, great news to see so far in the last couple of weeks. We are experiencing what is suggestive of a downtrend, and also suggested that we hit the peak. But again, we need to monitor the situation. We're not in the woods yet. By any means, this is still pretty high activity in terms of COVID. But at least in perspective, it's not as high as we were at this time of the year in any of the other years of the pandemic that we've really been dealing with and coping with. So I think that's the silver lining to all this, and what's hope for the best. But still, this means it's even more imperative in terms of prevention measures. The individuals follow those, so we can kind of continue and maintain that downtrend and not have any other surprises throughout the beginning of the year. So the other thing in terms of really important metrics to monitor is also, and really is going to be very helpful, is the wastewater monitoring. And this is for Fairfield, Connecticut, in terms of the county. And so you can see here for this data, again, where we were back in, you know, the the end of the year, the beginning of January, in terms of the peak of that activity. Keep in mind, obviously, wastewater monitoring is looking at the sewer walls, anybody that's obviously utilizing those systems. It is going to be, it's a very sensitive test. It's going to be able to be detected if we have certain level of SARS COVID two, the virus that causes COVID nineteen RNA inside the, inside that waste product and wastewater. And so you can see how we did increase, it's again, supporting the same trends we were seeing with the COVID associated hospitalizations, but then a gradual downtrend of the most recent couple of data points, which is again, support each other. So it's great to see when the data is congruent with each other. They're supported with one another overall. So overall, again, that's suggestive of good news. But again, like I said, we were not out of the woods yet, so we have to be very careful. So be mindful of these items that I just outlined before in terms of how we can mitigate our our risk of transmission. And keep in mind, we're still in the higher end of medium. So we may, if we ever do experience an uptick activity, that could potentially push us back into the high. But nonetheless, we've been vacillating in this higher end of medium in terms of our COVID community levels for Fairfield County. And again, you know, just reiterating that point and interpreting this, because again, it's a very important metric that's, you know, really kind of directing the guidance for all these communities in in this country. You know, again, green is, you know, people may choose to wear a mask at any time, but masks are still recommended in the public transportation settings and maybe required in other places by local or state authorities. Medium or high, if you're a high risk of getting ill from COVID nineteen, wearing a high-quality mask respirator. Again, if you're having any sort of household or social contact with somebody, a high risk, you know, consider self-testing to detect infection from contact and considering wearing a mask when indoors with them. And high is, you know, it's recommended by the CDC, wear a high-quality mask respirator. And again, if you're at high risk of getting sick, you know, avoiding non-essential indoor activities where that could put somebody at high risk of exposure. Keep in mind, what what exactly is a high-quality mask respirator? So again, we're familiar with, you know, the cloth face masks. That is kind of obviously the lower end of that spectrum of protection. Again, we want to think about masks as a spectrum of protection. So some are better than others. And so you have the cloth face masks, then you have obviously the surgical face mask, which are usually the accordion-looking ones that are multiple folds. They have, you know, three different materials layered together. Then from there, you might be more familiar with also the KN ninety fives, which are the, I like to call them the duck bills. They look like, you know, like a bird, the duck, kind of mouth or beak. And, you know, those are also obviously much more protective compared to the other two prior ones that I just mentioned. And then obviously, there's the N ninety five, which is obviously rigorously tested. It meets, you know, standards in terms of especially occupational use. And that's even better level of protection compared to the others. And so again, relative to everybody's circumstances, they should be wearing a mask, especially in the high is setting for CDC community levels, but then also what obviously works for them in those circumstances too, because there may be obviously, you know, disabilities or other factors that may contribute to their need to, you know, use a different type of face mask compared to others. But nonetheless, the N ninety five is superior compared to the others. So with that said, the other prevention measure, as I mentioned before, is ventilation. I think this is just a good visual, just to demonstrate this, because this is an important thing to keep in mind. So with ventilation, you know, again, as I mentioned, it's like relative to the windows, you know, again, with the HVAC units in terms of filtration there and having, you know, appropriate filtration relative to that. But as you can see with this visual, it's nice to see, like, as you can see with the closed-door setting without any ventilation, the virus particles, they just sit around and they hover, and then there's a high risk of obviously exposure. If you have these windows open, if you're running fans, HVAC units, you know, especially exhausting air to the outdoors, which is obviously going to be more beneficial. You can see how you could drastically reduce the amount of contaminant, especially the virus in the air. So just wanted to hit that point home. All right. So again, you know, as I kind of roughly mentioned with XBB one point five, you can see here from the CDC, this is looking at the the variants over the, you know, past weeks. And you can see where we're at for the most recent data reporting. Again, this is looking at for the United States from October ninth, two thousand and twenty two to January fourteenth, two thousand and twenty three. And as you see, you know, again, we were dealing with BA five over time, and that has decreased. And BA five was running quite a bit of the show in two thousand and twenty two. And then BQ one one and BQ one entered the picture relatively the same time, and you can see how they outcompeted BA five. But now they have their own kind of, and also BF seven also entered the picture, and it was on the the track to actually kind of, you know, outcompete potentially BA five, and then BQ one one and BQ one entered the picture. And now we have XBB one five, which is outcompeting all the others. It really truly is like a race. It's a scene, and it's a very interesting one. You know, which with each new subvariant, it increased relative to the mutations and the perfect condition to, you know, obviously, help transit like the holidays and the winter time. You know, to further kind of increase its, you know, its incidence and prevalence in the community. But yes, there's higher infectivity with XBB one point five compared to the others. There is some evasion of some therapeutics, especially in terms of monoclonal antibodies, some of them, in terms of XBB one five. So it is something to kind of factor in and consider its ability to kind of do that. And so again, another reason why we need to be cautious here, because again, you know, there's always new mutations that could always develop. With every new infection, a new mutation can develop, and that may be something that obviously could be more detrimental to, you know, human health as it, you know, has greater and further opportunities to succeed in terms of transmission. So always be mindful of that. With that said, now looking at it for the country by region, you can see how XBB one point five with, you know, the that kind of bluish color is really, the majority of it is obviously proportion-wise in the northeast. So that's region one and region C, region one being New England, region two would be in New York, New Jersey, Puerto Rico and the US Virgin Islands. And you can see over three quarters of that is XBB one point five. It pretty much, again, the It pretty much again, the eastern seaboard is the hotbed and ground zero for that activity. But you can see I was having growing success in other parts of the country. So they have yet. To really experience that wave of XBB one point five as well. So it's something to anticipate, because the timing of this is never always in sync. Usually the northeast will get hit, and then it makes this waves across. Us, you know, maybe the Midwest and South and the the West Coast. And sometimes it might be the inverse of that. Sometimes the California, the West Coast. Will be introduced to it, and it makes its way the other direction. But unfortunately for us, especially a lot of the Omicron sub-variants, usually it's been. Region two, region one have been kind of ground zero for that initial introduction and success of these variants that have, you know, greater transmission and greater opportunity to transmit. So with that said, switching gears a little bit, because again, I mentioned we're looking at respiratory illness season, looking at for influenza. Looking at where we're at right now, the current season, twenty twenty-two to twenty-three, here in the black line, you can see how we peaked. Much earlier compared to the other three seasons demonstrated here, the prior three seasons. And again, this is looking at percentage of emergency department visits for influenza-like illness. But, you know, fortunately, you know, we had a downtrend, a very consistent downtrend as we as we were experiencing the uptick of COVID. Which is a very interesting relationship in general, for those that are kind of just, you know, infectious disease nerds. It's just very interesting how each of these viruses kind of had an opportunity to present themselves, and I'll talk about that a little bit more with RSV. But you can see how it's been on the gradual downtrend, but still, as you can see typically with flu, you usually have a second peak somewhere in the season. And that's looking more at the type B influenza. So that's something we still need to keep an eye out for and prepare for and be wary of. So that's something else that's still in the season, even with this milder. Winter season that we're experiencing. And you can see this again over time relative to just influenza cases. By influenza type. And you can see how type B has a little proportion here, you know, that's the orange. The majority are type A, and especially as we're familiar with the ones that have been subtype. It's H three N two, which is, you know, again, the kind of the clinical name is the hospitalizer. Looking at it from a county perspective, especially when you look at it from a rate perspective, Fairfield County unfortunately is the highest. When you look at the other counties for the current season, but you know, we're closely followed by, you know, New London and Wyndham, then followed by New Haven and the others. And then looking at it for hospitalizations. You know, you can see here how again, the downtrend is very indicative here too, a majority, you know, type A. But we just need to keep an eye out for type B. I still want to caution to get to that. And then also. Keeping in mind, in terms of the hospitalizations, the demographics impacted. So as typical with, you know, type A influenza. You have usually the fifty years of age plus age group that's typically impacted, and usually the older the age group, the more proportion in terms of hospitalizations. And then you also do have pediatric. Less than ten years of age that had a decent proportion here in terms of representation with the hospitalized cases. So it's just again, something to keep an eye on. Relative to influenza. And then also just a quick note about influenza-related deaths. Again, fortunately, in some ways, depending on how you look at it, again, that's, it's been better than, you know, than anticipated. Relative to the current season, but still not great to see this, right? We have to keep in mind, we had fifty-seven influenza-associated deaths throughout the season. So that's, that's. Obviously not good. And it's something we want to avoid. So it's still something in the mix here, as even though COVID is obviously kind of been the bigger. Bigger portion of that, that factor there that we're concerned with. But nonetheless, when you look at it for influenza-associated deaths by age group, you can see how, again, it follows mostly a linear trend for the older the age group. The more deaths. But again, we want to avoid these things. So be mindful of that. And again, masks that you use for COVID will also help mitigate flu. So. You know, that's another important point to kind of this episode there. Looking at it from a national perspective, this is data up to January seventh. For influenza-like illness. And you can see how we're not purple like we used to be, right? You know, very high is the purple. You know, and Connecticut was in there at that, at the earlier points of the influenza peaks. But as you can see, excuse me, you can see the eastern seaboard still has a decent amount of high activity, including Connecticut. As well as the south and the southwest and the west coast. So it's just something else to keep in mind that influenza is still circulating. So even when I mentioned that, you know, some of these numbers are better. It still means activity is still occurring, and it always could change trajectory too. If obviously we let our guard down. So we've got to be mindful of that. So then looking at it from RSV perspective, this is looking at it for the state of Connecticut. You can see how we peaked. Unfortunately, that's a great thing. And now things are dropped down to pretty much. A, you know, kind of normal level where we typically would see RSV activity or more acceptable level. You know, compared to the kind of the historical highs that we saw earlier. And so again, it became with this season thus far, again, it's not over yet. RSV entered the picture and quite in a quite a high rate. And then it also was impacting a lot of pediatric population and also the elderly population as well. Then from there, kind of segued into influenza, and that obviously peaked very quickly and early in the season compared to other ones. And then COVID then entered the picture. And so it's just very interesting again, from that perspective, in terms of the interaction, the relationship with these viruses with one another to some degree. Nonetheless, that doesn't doesn't exclude the fact that there is the risk of co-infection, since somebody could actually be infected. With, you know, one or more of these viruses at the same time, although, you know, fortunately rare in comparison. Nonetheless, you know, looking at from a national perspective, the state of Connecticut for RSV has mirrored kind of. What's been going on in the United States in terms of having that peak and then the continual downtrend and decrease. So. Good news there, but again, anything could change. So we got to be careful and very cautious with this. So. You know, CDC has provided, you know, kind of the weekly report updates. And so they kind of just remind us that's new year, same variants in terms of Omicron. We're dealing with Omicron, but just obviously. New mutations that manifest in new sub-variants and, you know, increased infectivity and other kind of concerns that are related to that too. As, as I mentioned probably many a time. The other thing I want to just remind everybody, covid.gov, very simple link, very easy link to remember. Is a great resource just for individuals to access, you know, resources to help protect themselves and maintain that level of prevention. So that includes masks. You can get free masks via this method. And so. Where is it? I didn't open it up, but you can open it up right here. You can learn more about it, where to actually access masks. So it goes to the CDC webpage, you type in your zip code, you can find all the places where you can get these masks, masks. Free of charge. And so that's a great thing. Also, in addition to this, there's the at-home tests, which again, is still an incredible tool. This obviously creates that data gap. And so you can go then to covid.gov, access this, order these free tests, and I'll show you how to do that real quick. You just click the link, you just put your information, put your your mailing address, and it will send it to you free of charge. And that's for individual rapid antigen tests for COVID. So that's really awesome. There's also call service here, one eight hundred two three two zero two three three, or one eight eight seven two zero seven four eight nine. For those that prefer phone, but there's at least a couple avenues to at least get that stuff. And by all means, it's recommended to get that, have it in stock. Just because you never know when you need it. You can't predict when you get infected with the virus naturally. And so this is a good time to obviously have that in stock and ready. At, you know, in your household, because it might be yourself or somebody else in the household that may need it. And then also keep in mind that even though there's expiration dates listed on all these materials. Double check at the FDA website just to ensure that, you know, they might not have received extensions, because most of them have. So that increases their shelf life. So don't go throwing them out quite yet. Double check and make sure. They still haven't got, if they gotten one of those extensions, because then they're still good, and you can still utilize them. So we want to make sure. You retain these resources and not, you know, obviously you waste them unnecessarily or too early in the process. So. It's one to mention this in lieu of that. And then also obviously there's, you know, a vaccine locator for COVID vaccine, so definitely staying up to date with the vaccine. And then also in terms of treatment, so you don't, don't forget about test to treat. And so there's options for those individuals, especially those that may be at greater risk of severe illness, to get this in a timely fashion, because time is of the essence. If somebody should test positive to get the antiviral treatment for COVID. That's going to be incredibly important. And so that's another vital resource that everybody can access. There's one stop shop from the federal government, covid.gov. So this is a little bit lengthy overview. I just want to kind of remind everybody with the new year here. Especially still us in the respiratory illness season, just all the resources that we do have and just, you know, some general other reminders. But. Thanks again for your patience, because I know this is a little bit longer than our usual update. Thank you. Happy new year again.
Brian, great. Thank you so much for the very comprehensive update with the with the virus. So Deanna, I turn it back over to you. Unless anybody has any questions of Mr. Weeks? No? Alright, Deanna, go ahead.
So I have one, a quick update to provide before, I know we have the action items after. So just wanted to let everyone know that we are running our healthy resolutions program right now in partnership with the North Library. And so we've been having sessions, it's a five-week health education program that's aimed at identifying healthy behaviors and learning a new topic that improves overall health. Each Tuesday from noon to one, the Community Health Division partners with the library to host a one-hour lunch and learn on different health topics. Our first week, we did smart goal setting, when making goals, resolutions for the new year and time management. In week two. We had, it was focused on eating for energy, looking at food and nutrition with a dietitian. We also have upcoming sessions. So if anyone's interested in participating, there's information that we have. That we can send around if anyone's interested, that we've also posted on social media. We have on January twenty-fourth, let's get moving. January thirty-first is healthy ways to manage stress. And February seventh is tips for increasing happiness. So everyone's encouraged and welcome to participate. And it's free and welcome to all.
Great, thank you. Does anyone have any questions for Deanna? No? Alright, then I am going to move on to update from the chief of community services, Mr. Lamond Daniels.
Hi, good evening. And I know we're in nineteenth, but happy new year. This is the first time us meeting, and. I look forward to working with you, Chair Huberman, as our new chair, and. Welcome to also working with other new faces that I I do know, but not know in this. In this space. So good to see everyone. So just quickly, I'm gonna move on. We want to get to these resolution items. But the Community Services Department comprised of city departments that directly affect the social well-being and health of Norwalk residents. The larger Community Services Department's mission statement is to increase and sustain social well-being and health of all Norwalk residents. Especially to those, to new members of this committee. We have adopted the new reorg that was recommended by the efficiency study at the beginning of fiscal year twenty twenty-three. Which now comprises of the Health Department, the Human Services Department, and our, the Norwalk Public Library. So these are the three departments that will be coming before you throughout the year. Providing information, updates. And of course, the thing we most always need your support on is approving different contracts. And different proposals that we have are recommending for the larger body of the common council. And then ultimately gaining your approval for the merits assigned. And you'll be hearing of those items today. But in terms of my updates, I am, for those that join us, I, you know, I just get excited over the three and a half years that I've been here. And I remember being downstairs, which was formerly the HR department, coming and saying, I have all these bold ideas. Of what I wanted to do. And I'm looking at you, Councilperson Barbara Smith, in particular, and because you was the chair. And COVID hit us. And I'm like, oh, man, that's not what I want to do. But I'm just so excited that through this committee's support, and of course, Mayor Rilla's support, you know. COVID has definitely set us back in some things, but it also has catapulted us to do some great and fascinating things. And so in talking with Chair. Just going to briefly give an update on the Community Resource Hub, that this committee has graciously and just supported. Our, our, our mission, as you all know, I'm always talking about this. Many of the larger regional organizations that Norwalkers are eligible for are often in both Bridgeport and Stanford. And one of the first presentations I brought before you was. Excuse me, looking at the urban, urban league that is housed in Stanford. So they continually. To provide office hours in City Hall. So Norwalkers who are eligible for, and they're working on the United CT report, for me, it's a lot of information. Work to be very brief, United CT, the, the, the program where our state received funding to help pay back rent. So although the program is no longer open, there still is a backlog, backlog. So they're still in City Hall, working on that backlog for residents. And I always say, why is this so important? Because we know for many of our residents, traveling to Stanford can be an expense. Whether Uber, train, taxi, whatever the case may be, or just lack of transportation. So I just want to again, thank you. I also have a big, big announcement that we are, I think I can share it. Yeah, I think I can share, I think I think I share it. We are just so excited that Workplace in Bridgeport, under the leadership of Joe Garbone, who's executive director, but we've been working directly with his CO, Adrian Parkman. They have agreed to offer office hours here in City Hall. So we're just figuring out the days and times. We definitely plan to do a press announcement. And definitely expecting all you all to be there. But why is that important? We know that under Mayor Rilla's administration, workforce development has been one of our priorities. And as you all have heard. With the Pepperidge Farm closure, we, we would be supporting and complementing those services. But more importantly, to any Norwalk resident that needs support, you are now be able to come to. Your city, City Hall, and you may still have to go to Bridgeport for some of those classes and programs, but at least that initial intake can start in your home city. And I'm just so excited. And again, thank you all for your continued support. And then lastly, I'm not sure, I didn't read the minute, so I'm not sure if I mentioned this, but. We've been without a fair rent officer for almost a year. And so under Anna Vivian Estrella's leadership, we have hired Mr. Carlos Duque, and I will definitely. Have him come before this committee just to introduce himself. I'm a strong believer that our city residents should know who are serving them. In the city. And so we now have a full-time fair rent officer to really build that program back up. The program was never, it never stopped. But as you all remember, you approved a part-time attorney so that we can continue the services. Now we have Carlos. And I'm going to let Carlos, I don't want to steal his thunder, but he's bilingual Spanish. We all know that as a large population. And, and Councilperson Revelos, we still have Mandy, our Haitian Creole. And when in doubt, Mandy steps in to help support. And then, of course, we all have access to our access language line that our department uses increasingly. I will put a plug in, I will be asking for more money in the access language line item, because we have been using it. Like never before, as you all know, while many residents, at least the residents that we serve, not all our residents has bounced back because of COVID. Many of our residents are still seeking employment. Many of our residents are still struggling to pay their rent, which is why the Community Services, Human Service. Our, our Health Department is so needed at this time, and we are, we work to serve our constituents. With high quality and dignity with the resources that we allowed it, we are allowed. And then lastly. And speaking with the chair, we look forward to bringing our new chief diversity equity and included officer. Because this started in this committee, and through this committee's leadership, Nicole Ayers is one of the ones that really kind of held spearhead, you know, looking at the DEI. Because of the initiative, faltered a little bit. And so we definitely plan to update you, because that was a commitment that happened in this committee. That we will make sure our community, our residents stay informed. So again, this is kind of just kind of regrouping, because we had to move till Thursdays. But most certainly, under my leadership, we will make those necessary adjustments to make sure. Our department will be presenting to you and sharing the great work, and also proposing ideas and asking for your support as we move along throughout the year. So Chair, I'm looking forward to working with you. Thank you. It was a pleasure meeting with you. And thank you already. You have given our department your support. And we're looking forward for this year of great work on behalf of the Community Services Department. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Lamont. And I'm looking forward to working with you and the whole team as well in this, in this capacity. So this is the great stuff. Councilperson Meek.
Thanks, thanks, thanks for the updates there. Did you, did you submit your budget to Henry yet? Or are you, are you ready to disclose what the increase is from your side, or?
Not, you're on mute.
Yes, we did have our initial budget conversations with Henry, and those budget. Recommendations have been put forth. I don't have the budget with me, but I always like to talk about it in this group, so you all know, I just need your support. And I think we'll get this for the mayor. I don't foresee any challenges, because it's a needed service, but I always want to let you all know what we're doing and what we're increasing.
Okay, you're, you're not north of twelve percent or anything like that, are you?
Absolutely not.
Good job, good job.
Absolutely not.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Go ahead, Councilperson Diana Revolus.
Lamont, I just want to say thank you for that particular shout out with the languages and the, the. What's the word I'm looking for? The, well, due diligence in providing. Abilities for the language line and other language. Access for the many, for the over. access for the many for the over sixty that we have in Norwalk. But I do want to just appreciate and thank you for that acknowledgement of the fact that we do have a need for the Haitian community, but there are so many other different languages. And when we talk about diversity, equity, inclusion, and if it's one person who needs Swahili, that's what we need to do. So I thank you very much for that.
And our language line has all languages that we that our budget allows us when we need to. So thank you.
Yeah, I'm a big component. And I actually, and I will, I can talk and we can discuss because I do know, I'm sure you already do to vote. We do have a contact directly for the area with the language line that maybe we can and using their abilities more, maybe we can help in the cost and, you know, help in the different ways we it could be accessible to us in our community. So again, thank you very much. I appreciate you. And we'll talk about it later.
Thank you so much, Councilperson.
All right, great. Thank you. I just want to note for the record that Councilperson Ed Camacho left the meeting at seven twenty four PM. And he was visiting. He is not a member of the committee, just for the record. All right, any more questions or anything for Chief Daniels? No? All right, and we will move on to the action items. Five, five, one, this is the Health Department. Authorize the mayor Harry W. Rilling to execute any and all agreements, documents, instruments, or amendments with Fairfield University as may be necessary to allow for students in the university's graduate and undergraduate programs to be placed at the Norwalk Health Department for internships and student learning opportunities. May I have a motion? Councilperson Barbara Smith moves the item. And I'm assuming, Deanna, this is you.
Yes, Chair, if I may intro Deanna, just just to give some background, I just want to say again that I'm always impressed with Deanna's leadership. She's always looking to innovative and creative ways to continue to set our Health Department. You know, at at to set our heart set to set our Health Department as a leader. You know, just recently, because she's not going to toot her own horn. She has been recognized by the state of Connecticut. She also serves on in committees on the state because of her leadership in Health Department. We've been recognized time and time again through our covert response, both directly by the governor himself and by her peers and colleagues throughout the state. So so Dan, I just want to publicly thank you for your leadership and the work that you do. And we are coming before you to continue to look at not just the services we provide, but how can we also be a model program? Because we're going to talk about today workforce development. We want to, I think COVID taught us the need for public health practitioners. And so this program will support those efforts and, you know, wanting people to be public health people. And so Deanna will be sharing, and she'll give you more detail, but I just wanted to provide some context around some of these efforts that we talk about internally and bring before you. And we have an amazing partnership with Fairfield University. They helped us with our food report. So we have data on, we can tell you right now where the food as it are and through Teresa's leadership, we are defining, identifying interventions, working with our food organizations. Again, how we how we strategically use data to then provide interventions to our communities. So Chair, thank you so much for allowing me to interrupt, intervene.
And that's all right.
And Deanna leadership definitely should be commended. And thank you, Deanna, for the work that you do on behalf of our city and residents.
Yes, I second that. Thank you. And the floor is yours.
Thank you so much. And thank you, Lamont. So yeah, as 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 Lamont was speaking about, you know, this broader context of workforce development. There's a whole initiative at the federal level, the state level, and the local level on workforce development with public health. Recently, the CDC had been awarded workforce development money, and they granted all the state health departments money. That's going to then trickle down eventually to local health departments to really foster the public health workforce. I had the honor of attending a press conference back in December where Senator Blumenthal, Senator Murphy, Governor Lamont, Commissioners Atani, they all spoke about workforce development and the importance of bringing more public health workers into working at the, in particular, at the local level and how important it is to have that work being conducted and investing more into the workforce so we can better serve the community. So excited about all that work that's going to be moving forward in in collaboration with the State Health Department. We've always valued workforce development at the Norwalk Health Department. It's a big component of what we do. It's a component of being a nationally accredited health department. And so we're always looking to seek new partnership opportunities. We're really excited about continuing to expand working with Fairfield University, as Lamont mentioned, they were just so instrumental and so helpful to us related to food access. And so now they further developed their public health programs. And so, you know, they have a master's degree program and a bachelor's degree program. We've already met with them. And Teresa and her team put together a really great video, kind of like a talking about what does community health do and what do staff members who work in community health do to then circulate it amongst their students to get them interested in thinking about working, you know, at health departments like ours. And so really, this this action item is related to creating an affiliation agreement with them so that we can over time continue to accept students through their program and host them at the Health Department and provide those opportunities that benefit both the Health Department, the community, and and the students themselves.
Great. Does anyone have any questions for Deanna? Councilperson Smith?
Yes, no, no questions, but just a comment or two. I just think this is terrific. And, you know, I, Deanna, I just want to congratulate you on your work and thank you for your leadership. And it's a terrific program in partnership with Fairfield University and and a way for us to support up and coming young professionals and support the Health Department. So well done. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Councilperson Revelus. We're not hearing you actually, Councilperson Revelus.
Is this better?
Ah, there we go. Gotcha.
Okay, I'm so sorry. I just have, you know, because of my love for health, I just have one question with this. It's a great program. But you know, my holding points on, is there any path of this that looks or discusses for yet for new oncoming professionals that we may encourage the natural pathic side of things as well? Is there any lane in that with this program at all? Just wondering. I know the two don't normally coincide. It's just curiosity on my part.
So thank you for the question. I don't, I can't, we didn't get into the specifics in terms of, you know, what's in their curriculum, you know. I know they're they're, you know, looking at like what's within the accreditation program for for schools of public health and programs in public health. We didn't get into that level of detail in terms of specific curriculum content. So I'm sorry, I can't answer that question right now.
Sorry. No, I said, I'm so sorry. It's just curiosity. I could completely understand if you don't have that information. Yeah. Thank you.
Okay. Great. Any other questions from the committee? I have a couple, just a real quick question. The the with this, this is an agreement between the city and Fairfield. Then what happens with the individual students? Do they sign a contract of some kind? And does that have an NDA associated with it? And sort of what are the, what are those particulars?
Sure. So, you know, there's been this, what this will allow us for is to host multiple students over time periods and to not have to do formal contracts and agreements with each individual student because, you know, the the everything, you know, will change, you know, depending on the project, it may change over time. But typically, whenever we host a student, we have an agreement of what the project is. It's in writing. It's an agreement, you know, is an understanding between us and the preceptor. And then we also have all our own internal policies and procedures related to new staff and volunteers and interns. So we have all our staff and interns and volunteer, you know, anyone who's going to get anywhere close to any personally identified health information, they're going to read our confidentiality policy. They're going to sign an agreement that they understand. We also do, you know, confidentiality trainings and HIPAA trainings and that sort of thing as well. So it's sort of part of our standard operating procedures for anybody who's going to be working or volunteering at the Health Department.
Okay, great. Thank you. Any other questions from any members of the committee? If not, then I'd like to call for a vote on this item. All those in favor of moving this item to the Common Council, please signify by raising your hand.
Aye.
Any opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries unanimously. Five, two. Authorize the mayor Harry W. Rilling to execute any and all agreements, documents, instruments, or amendments as may be necessary to extend the student practicum internship agreement between the City of Norwalk Health Department and the University of Connecticut Nursing Program. Can I have a motion? Councilperson Nicole Ayers moves the item. And I believe this is back to you, Deanna.
So in the same line, workforce development really important, but I'll just provide some additional information for in context. For Yukon, we've been working with them for years. This is to re-up the agreement to continue to do this great work. We've had some really great projects from these students in the past. And we've had usually groups of two or four students at a time. We've had one larger, larger group of eight at one time that worked on environmental survey at nail salons. Other students in the past have worked on infection prevention and protection presentations to nursing home staff covering prevention strategies related to flu and ammonia and other respiratory illnesses. We've had flyers related to TB control being produced by these students about our different control services. We've had these students create referral forms for us that target community providers related to TB. Also, you know, making connections to urgent care settings and providers. We've had presentations and projects related to childhood and adolescent vaccinations. We've had another project related to proper handling and disposals of sharps in the community. So really broad, a lot of potential and excited to see hopefully this continues and we can have many more great projects in the future.
Well, that sounds great. I I think both of these programs are just fantastic. I mean, it's about it's about education, but it's about practical, you know, on the job training, so to speak. And I think that that I'm I'm so excited that Norwalk is is participating in this and at the forefront of it. It's fantastic. Are there any questions from any other member of the committee? Seeing none, call for the vote. All those in favor of moving this to the full council, signify by raising your hand.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. All right, five, three. Authorize the mayor Harry W. Rilling to enter into a data sharing agreement with Norwalk Public Schools to allow NPS to share de-identified student data for use in the Norwalk Student BMI Data Report. Can I have a motion?
Motion.
Thank you, Councilperson Diana Revelus. Is this one Teresa? I saw her screen. Come on, there you go. All right.
Yeah.
Take it away.
Good evening, everybody. Yeah, so you may be familiar, every five years or so, the Health Department works with Norwalk Public Schools to look at student data and analyze student health data to determine the different proportions of weight status among children in Norwalk Public Schools. And so we're looking at the data that students provide with their state mandated physicals in kindergarten, sixth grade and ninth grade to analyze, you know, how many children or what proportion of the kids in those grades are underweight, at a healthy weight, overweight, or obese based on the CDC's growth chart by age and gender. This allows us to look at an important health measure and then compare that to to the county as a whole, the state as a whole, and national statistics on childhood obesity. So it allows us to really understand how to best utilize resources for nutrition, physical activity, and a lot of our other childhood health interventions. And so the data sharing agreement is a standard agreement that Norwalk Public Schools uses when they share, when they share data with external partners, just outlines, as you can see, you know, some of the guidelines around how to make sure that that data stays safe and protected. And it allows us, that's a, it's an agreement that we had in twenty eighteen with our last BMI data project. And they've since updated some of the language. And so we're just here to ask for for approval on it so that we can move forward with the next project.
Okay, great. Do we have any questions from anyone on the committee? Any questions? No? All right. Well, then I will call for the vote. All those in favor of moving this to the council, please signify by raising your hands.
Aye.
Opposed? And abstentions? So that was, we had one no, Councilperson Alterman, and everybody else was was an aye. All right. Thank you very much, Teresa. And that is it for the January nineteenth agenda. So there we go. I knew that was coming. All right. Motion to adjourn. All in favor, please say, signify by raising your hand. Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. Thank you all very much. And have a wonderful evening. All right.
Thank you.